Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, January 5th, 2016, meeting in Middletown City Council. If you please stand and join me in a momentation and the pledge allegiance to the flag. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kankert, call the roll, please.
Mr. Picard.
Here.
Ms. Bronston.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
All right, our first order of business this evening is the presentation. I'd like to invite Kevin and Karen Berry down to the podium from the Medicine Shop.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Appreciate you coming down.
Appreciate it.
It's always great to be able to recognize some of our local businesses, and the Medicine Shop is celebrating their 30th anniversary this year, so on behalf of City Council, we have this proclamation to present in recognition of our appreciation for your service here in the Middletown community and all you've done. Whereas, Kevin and Karen Berry opened the Medicine Shop Pharmacy on January 6th, 1986. During the grand opening week, they welcomed over 1,000 Middletown residents to their new full-service, independent, locally-owned retail pharmacy. The Medicine Shop offers professional prescription service, delivery, home medical equipment, home oxygen services and supplies, specialized diabetes care, as well as compounding services. The Medicine Shop Pharmacy takes the time to get to know their patients' health needs and concerns, and provides compassionate and caring personal attention. For the past 30 years, the Medicine Shop Pharmacy has offered Middletown the best in pharmacy services. And whereas, the Medicine Shop Pharmacy provides their patients caring beyond prescriptions. The Medicine Shop was the first pharmacy in Middletown to offer cholesterol screening, and also the first to offer immunization services. At the Medicine Shop Pharmacy, quality care means more than just prompt filling of prescriptions. And whereas, for the past 30 years, the Medicine Shop Pharmacy has gone the extra mile to help patients get the medications and healthcare supplies that they need. The Medicine Shop Pharmacy has been an integral part of our community, and we wish them continued success in the future. And therefore, I, Lawrence Mulligan, Mayor of the City of Middletown, Butler Warren County, State of Ohio, on behalf of all City Council, do hereby proclaim January 5th, 2016, as a day fitting to recognize and celebrate the 30th anniversary of the Medicine Shop Pharmacy. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And best wishes. Would you like to share a couple of words to council on what you've been doing down there for 30 years? So, thank you.
Well, you read pretty well covered it, but thank you. We are honored to be here, and we've been blessed to be a part of the Middletown community for 30 years now. A lot of independent businesses don't last that long statistically, anyway, and so we've been very blessed to be a part of this community, and appreciate the opportunity to serve many of you and your families over the years, and would look forward to doing more of that. So, thank you again for having us, and Steve knows I'm much too young to have been doing this for that long, since we grew up together playing in the backyard back in the day at Northmont High School, so.
All right.
Anyway, thank you again very much.
Well, here's to another 30 years. Very well done. All right, next order of business is citizen comments. I received a couple of cards this evening. The first is from Mr. Merrill Wood. I'd like to invite you down to the podium. If we could get your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Merrill Wood. I reside at 3606 Grand Avenue, Middletown, Ohio. Gentlemen and ladies of council, I am here tonight to speak to your choice, which will be made by moving into executive session and voting for a vice mayor. Certainly, vice mayor is an important role. It is a role that possibly can lead to other political ambitions. I would tell you that I miss very much the seven ward complex or the situation upon which council used to operate. The seven ward members represented seven specific areas of the city, and that went away a number of years ago, to where now we have five council persons that represent at large. All of you are supposed to represent the various demographics of the city. Mr. Mayor, certainly you represent the second ward, but I would assume as a mayor, you eventually will move on. There are politics that possibly might call in the county, and I certainly, as your brother has done, moved on to politics within the county. Two of our representatives are new members. Two are, yourself included, have served for a number of years. But there is one particular tonight that I'd like to speak to, and he is Dan Picard. Dan has served on this council very efficiently, and I respect him totally. He is a successful attorney, and has certainly deserves the praise that he has earned. He is a successful practicing attorney, and I feel that his attention has been most efficient. But I'm here to represent and to support Dora Bronson. She has served on council for a number of years, and I feel that she is very much qualified and should be chosen as your vice mayor. Dora, excuse me, has represented a variety of demographic areas in the city, and I feel now that the wards are gone, that she would be the best choice for vice mayor. When you go into executive session, you will clearly be choosing someone that should represent us all, and I feel that Dora would be best qualified for that position. You will go to accession, you will come back, and frankly, those who will vote for or against, those who were required to vote for themselves, of course, would be Mr. Picard. He has already served as vice mayor, and I feel it's most appropriate for Dora to be chosen for this position. Thank you.
All right, thank you for sharing your thoughts tonight. Next card I have this evening is from Ms. Patty Caldwell. Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Patty Caldwell. I live 601 Valley View Drive. Thank you. It gives me great pleasure to speak on behalf of my big sister, Dr. Dora Bronston, on the opportunity of her possibly becoming vice mayor of Middletown. As my recent retirement of the Middletown City Schools, it has given me the opportunity to see for myself how much she actually loves Middletown. While out in the community, she makes herself available to participate and available to any functions that she can possibly get to. She is truly committed to doing what is legal and right to have a hand in pursuing the growth of Middletown to its highest value. I feel she will truly be an asset to our Mayor Mulligan on the appointment of being vice mayor. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our City Manager Reports. Mr. Atkins.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I've got two items for this evening. During the presentation, the last meeting, we had some questions on Buxton, which is your agenda item, ordinance number 2015-82 this evening. To make sure that we had all questions answered, I asked Dennis Mayer to fly up from Texas and give a short presentation to add some additional data.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for having me. From what I understand, there are some questions on some of the experiences with some existing clients that Buxton has, so I just wanted to share a few of those today. What I did is, the ones that I picked out just had some similarities, not necessarily they're in Ohio, but they have similarities that look like Middletown in a sense. So, the first one that I want to touch on is similar in size, population-wise. That's Kingsport, Tennessee. Kingsport, Tennessee, has been a client of ours for several years now, but what made them reach out to us is they were understanding that they couldn't take a wait-and-see approach to retail and just wait on them. They needed to have to take a proactive approach to retail and recruiting them into the community. Due to the size of their staff and the many efforts that they had, they just found that it was very challenging and constantly just ran into defeat. They just weren't able to get engaged with those retailers. So what they did is they reached out to Buxton, and we've helped them understand retail, understand that retail language. In doing so, at this point, they've recruited over a million square foot of retail, and some of those retailers that they landed was Ashley Furniture, Old Navy, Hobby Lobby, Panera Bread, Starbucks, Kohl's, several more. Again, they've recruited over a million square foot. Another retailer that I feel is very similar in a sense of distance, you guys are about 35, 40 miles from, or north of Cincinnati. Waxahachie, Texas is a client of ours for three years now. They're about 35 miles south of downtown Dallas. So what they understood is that their market share was quite a bit larger than what retailers were viewing them as. Their constant battle that they were getting is, you guys are too small for us to move into. So that's where they leaned on us. They knew the reputation that we have in the retail industry. We're truly retail experts. We're the ones behind retailers, doing the market validation for their site location, telling them where to locate. So, we're essentially using that exact same data to validate why they need to, retailers need to go into their community. So we understood that market share, and their successes that they had were not only landing different retailers, but they also have a project from a developer, Hunt's Properties, that is developing a 227,000-square-foot project there. That developer actually even said that they wish every community out there had access to the information that we're able to provide to help them move forward with confidence when making these decisions. Some of the retailers that they have, in 2015 that they recruited, or we recruited as a team, that we identified was McAllister's Deli, Kirkland's, TJ Maxx, Hancock Fabrics, Five Below, Ulta, and Tuesday Morning. In December, Waxahachie actually renewed for an additional three-year partnership with Buxton as well. Another one that I wanted to touch on, a third partner of ours, is Rochester, New Hampshire. They've been a partner of ours now for over seven years. They are a state that does not see any revenue from a sales tax perspective. But what they found before renewing into additional years and partnerships with Buxton, they wanted to do an economic development analysis. What did they word it as exactly? Basically, to qualify, I'm sorry, an impact analysis, as it was, economic impact analysis, to make sure that their investment was worthwhile in Buxton. And they found that for every dollar that they invested in Buxton, they got a $91 return. So needless to say, they're very happy with us and still partner with us today. But it goes beyond retail. We also have efforts in physician intelligence to identify if there's needs within the community for, say, more pediatric help, or cardiac, or dentist, or whatever that may look like. We provide tools and answers for that, business retention. North Augusta recruited a large water park, which we identified that they could have 250,000 to 300,000 visitors per season that are going to stay overnight and generate that type of revenue into the community as well. So there's just a handful of some success stories or partners of ours that I felt would be similar to Middletown in certain characteristics.
As you're aware, we gave you the presentation and also gave you the proposal at the prior council meetings, and again, we believe with the other things we're doing in economic development, with the Development Director and the two Assistant Directors, that this is an area that we still need to recruit in, not only for jobs, not only for, you know, the community, but for quality of life, for the ability to spend money in our own community instead of having to get on the highway and go up north or south to get the things that we need. So I believe in this very strongly. We've put a lot of work into it, and we hope that you'll pass that tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Mayor or Mr. Atkins?
I have a question.
Sure.
Thanks for coming all the way up. Just wanted to ask, I understand it's kind of a three-phase project or three-year project. Front end's going to be, you're going to be kind of diagnosing what our city's about and what we have to offer. In years two and three, are you going to help as far as recruitment of business, or is it going to be, you're going to put us in contact with them, and they're going to do the rest? What's that end of things look like?
It's a true fluid partnership between the city and Buxton. We're the retail experts. We know the retail industry, so we're going to be the market validation firm behind you guys. But we're going to be engaged every step of the way. We have account management team with you. But on top of that, you guys are the experts on your community. You could speak on what incentives there may be, facade requirements, why your community is unique to any other community out there. There's nobody else or no firm out there that knows your community from that standpoint better than you. So basically, you guys are going to be putting that foot forward, and then we're going to be engaged from the retail standpoint on the market validation, showing them why you're a viable location for them to move into and succeed. Show them where they have markets that look just like yours, that these retailers are in currently and that they're successful in. But the three-year partnership, to give you an idea what that looks like, is we're going to do that market validation, understand how your community live their lives and spend their money on a daily basis, identify what retailers are looking for that customer base, that's their number-one core customer, and we'll match that retailer to you. So basically, what we're doing is taking the guesswork out of retail recruitment, identifying what retailers are truly most likely to locate here, also looking at those characteristics that we know retailers are looking for, whether it's co-tenants, adjacencies, square footage, traffic counts, I mean, you name it. There's so many different characteristics that retailers are looking for. This is the type of information that we provide them for their site locating. So we're going to identify those retailers, put these recruitment packages together of all that information that they want and need to see, and then on top of that, we are going to make that initial contact to those retailers, they're key decision-makers. Then we have account management team, like I said, that's going to be engaged on conference calls with them. If they've got to fly out for a meeting, you know, if it's onsite-type meeting, that will be available. There's a scout platform that's a gateway into all the information Buxton provides, that you guys will have this information available at your fingertips. It's not a one-time study or a one-time market analysis. It's a fluid project. We're going to be available for conferences that retailers and communities are going to be attending. We'll facilitate meetings there. So really, the entire process, that first year, year two, we know that landscape's going to change. We're going to have more retailers. It's going to look different. So we're going to do a refresh, identify that next subset of retailers, go through the exact same process, and then again in year three. So we're building a long-term pipeline of retail recruitment.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Bohannon, do you have a question?
Industrial. Do you have any connections in the industrial industry?
Not necessarily. Really, it's more, we're the largest aggregator of consumer analytic data, so really what we know is what individuals are spending their money on and what their behavior data is. But we also provide, you know, information on what retailers are good fit to sustain industrial or attract more industrial to serve the community and make people want to work and live here.
Anything else for Mr. Mayor or Mr. Atkins? Thank you. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate the information.
Your Honor, the second item is, we have before you a liquor permit proposal for Third Base at 911 Crawford Street. We had passed around some information from the police department that raised some questions by at least a couple of council members as to whether or not we should object to this liquor permit. I've asked Ashley to give us a little background on what it takes to do that, and before you tonight, you have a resolution if you wish to take action.
Ms. Bretland.
Thank you. Under the Ohio Vice Code, there are a number of grounds upon which the Division of Liquor Control can refuse to issue a liquor permit. One of those is that the owner has operated a liquor permit businesses in a manner that demonstrates a disregard for the laws, regulations, or local ordinances of this state or any other state. We feel that we meet the grounds. So what we would need to do is have an emergency resolution that allows us to object to the liquor permit requesting a hearing. We have a, I have a statement from the Chief Legal Officer, being Mr. Landon, that he feels we meet these grounds as well. The owner of this establishment had a liquor permit issued to him in January of 2013 for the Third Base Cafe. The liquor permit was canceled in July of '15 for a failure to renew. He has now applied for a new liquor permit under the name of the Third, the Third Base. It's a different name. The owner, as well as his fiancee, they live together, have pending charges in Middletown Municipal Court for not only liquor but gambling violations. The fiancee also has some charges for receiving stolen property that actually took place inside this establishment. There's been a number of instances of underage drinking, a number of police calls for acts of violence, including a shooting that occurred, I believe, in October of this year.
Okay.
Your Honor, with that in mind, if we are going to take action and be timely in it, we will have to pass an emergency resolution tonight. We have passed out a copy of that resolution, and it's ready for action later this evening if council wishes to take action on it, but we are prepared if you would like to move forward.
All right. Are there any questions for Ms. Bretland or Mr. Atkins on the proposed ordinance?
How long does this process take? If we object, then what happens after that?
It's been a while since we've done one. As I recall, and I was not directly involved in the last one, as I recall, it's a few-month process. We object, there's a hearing date set, which generally takes a couple of months to be set. There's a hearing in Columbus, as I recall. They have time to review it and make a decision, almost like a judicial decision. It'll then be issued whether or not they will renew or not renew that license, or actually, since it's a new license, whether they will grant it or not. My guess would be three to six months total by the time the process is over.
I'm assuming that Mr. Landon reviewed this and reviewed other cases where objections occurred and feels strongly that this will, that the objection will be sustained?
This is definitely within the realm, yes, that we can defend this well, yes.
Thanks.
All the issues that you've established here as far as what they've done in the past, will all that be packaged up and sent to Columbus as being our defense as to why we do not want them?
It will, again, Ms. Bretland kind of went over in layman's terms, the criteria. We will match up, yeah, specific code sections with the data that we have believed that.
Okay, so won't we just, the council says we don't want them to have it, that's good enough for them type of thing?
All they need is a resolution that you intend to object, that we will then use, put all the paperwork together and put the package together and get it to them in a timely manner. And that's everything I have, Your Honor.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to our consent agenda. Ms. Kankert.
For your consideration this evening, we have to receive and file Boarding Commission minutes from the Playing Commission of November the 11th, 2015, Civil Service Commission of October 28th and December 3rd, 2015, to confirm personnel appointments of Ashley Combs, City Planner, Department of Community Revitalization, Torrey Anderton, Information Systems Director, Department of Information Systems, and Boyce Ray Tolson, Assistant Public Works Superintendent and Safety Officer. To confirm the promotional fire department appointments of Tom Snively to Assistant Chief, Jeff Spalding to Deputy Chief, Dave Von Bargen to Captain, Rob Curry to Captain, and Jamison Verden to Lieutenant. To receive, file, approve, and accept a right-of-way dedication plat for Innovation Drive, to receive and file an oath of office for Joseph Rose, and to confirm boarding commission appointments to the Architectural Review Board of David McCauley Myers, Board of Appeals to Dustin Thompson, Civil Service Commission Tom Bricky, Citizens Advisory Board of the Police Thomas E. Norris, Deanna Shores, and Patty Caldwell, Convention and Visitors Bureau Candace Hunter, Health and Environment Board Sally Cash, Library Testees Ronnie Chaudray and Kenny Black, and Middletown Cemetery Board Ken Blanford, Charlene Kenny Akkus, and Frederick Tyson.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, Ms. Kankert, call the roll, please.
Ms. Bronston.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Picard.
Yes.
All right, and that brings us to our pending ceremony. Chief Lawley. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, and City Manager Atkins. We're here for the third time in a row to promote several of our individuals who have scored the highest in their promotional process to gain the privilege to move on in their careers to the next step. This kind of culminates our rebuilding of our leadership within the Division of Fire, and I think is an excellent first step in us getting the Division of Fire to where it needs to be. And with that, I'd like to call the first one down, Deputy Chief Tom Snively and his family. Deputy Chief Snively was hired on May 6th of 1992. He was promoted to apparatus operator on July 31st, 1995. He was promoted to fire lieutenant on April 11th, the year 2000, to fire captain on April 1st, 2004, and to fire deputy chief on August 29th, 2006. And tonight, we will appoint Deputy Chief Snively to the position of Assistant Chief. In 2015, Chief Snively graduated from the Ohio Fire Executive Officer Program, which was, is a very prestigious award, and at that program, he earned the top award for the best project that culminates the end of their two-to-three-year program. So with that, I'm going to invite Tom and his fiancee Sharon up, and Sharon will place the badge on Tom.
I'd just like to quickly thank you, thank you for the opportunity to serve cities, you know, city of Middletown. There's a lot of opportunities for guys to exercise the skills they've gained over the years in these promotions, and I'm proud of the captains and the lieutenants and the deputy chief that we're promoting tonight. I think we're putting the right people in the right spots. So I thank you to my family and friends. They got me here, so, good night.
Congratulations. Well done.
And yes, firefighters, you did hear me say Tom's fiancee.
Catch out the bag there, huh?
Like I was today. Congratulations. Like I was today. Congratulations, Sharon. Next up, I'd like to invite Captain Jeff Spalding and his family up. Captain Spalding is being promoted to Deputy Chief. Captain Spalding hired in with the City of Middletown Division of Fire on March 11th, 1996. He was appointed to Fire Marshal in May of 1997, and Fire Lieutenant on May 8th of 2002. And he was appointed Fire Captain on November 13th of 2008. And tonight, he has been appointed as Fire Deputy Chief. He will be in charge of the shift commander on the second platoon. And here tonight is his wife, Terry, to pin the badge on him. As you know, I've given everybody the opportunity to speak, but I don't think so here.
I promise I'll be on my best behavior. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity. A lot of this, over the last 20-some years, my wife tolerating all the time that goes into doing this stuff. And again, everybody else is getting promoted here today. There's a lot of time and energy that's dedicated to it. So again, hopefully continue providing the best that I can for the citizens of this community, as well as our firefighters that work with us and such. So thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay. Now we have Lieutenant David Von Bargen. David, if you and your family would come on up. Lieutenant Von Bargen was hired by the City of Middletown on February 13th of 1995. He was promoted to Apparatus Officer on December 11th of 2000. He was promoted to Fire Lieutenant on January 6th of 2010. And tonight, he will be appointed as a captain. And Dave will be a captain in charge of our EMS division. And Dave is being pinned tonight by his daughter Kate. And with him is his wife. Got to get everybody in the picture. Nadine assured me, get close.
Thank you. A microphone and a platform. I'll keep it under 15 minutes. I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, citizens of Middletown. I love my job. Appreciate the opportunity to do it and to serve here in the Middletown. 21 years ago, I didn't know where Middletown was. Now I consider it my hometown. So I look forward to serving in the position I'm in and doing good things and making this a better place. So, thank you.
Now, I would like to call up Lieutenant Rob Curry and his family. Lieutenant Curry was hired by the City of Middletown Division of Fire on September 7th of 1988. He was promoted Apparatus Operator on March 15th, 1995. And he had the distinguished opportunity of breaking me in as a new lieutenant. So, but he's not my handpicked driver. He was promoted to Fire Lieutenant on May 5th of 2005. He is also the father of two daughters, Rebecca and Sarah, and the only five-year-old too bloody that Fire Lieutenant knows when she was five. So I'm not going to stand too close to her. And Rob is being promoted tonight to Fire Captain. And I think Sarah and Rebecca are both going to, one's going to remove his badge and the other's going to put it on.
Thank you, Chief, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Mayor, the rest of council. Appreciate the opportunity. Hope to make the Middletown firefighters proud. Continue my career a few more years. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
You just don't pick a fight with a five-year-old like this because her hands were swollen to get between mine. And you're standing there, and there's like 12 firemen standing there, and you don't want them to see it. But, okay. Jamison Verden, firefighter Verden, if you would come up with your family. Jamie has been a firefighter with the City of Middletown since January 10th of 2000. Jamie was promoted to Squad Person on November 16th of 2001. He was promoted to Apparatus Operator on May 6th of 2010. And tonight, he has been promoted to Lieutenant. And his daughter and son, Gracie and Tyler, are here to do his badge pinning.
I'd like to thank the mayor, council, City Manager Atkins, and Chief Lawley for this opportunity. I'd also like to thank my family for putting up with me while I was going through this process. It's pretty strenuous to test against 29 other guys to get this opportunity. I'd also like to thank my family, mom and dad up there, and all the past and present guys that I've worked with. Hopefully, I'll make you guys proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, in conclusion, I'd like to recognize one of our firefighters here tonight. Firefighter Scotty Brugman has been a firefighter with the City of Middletown, and at the age of 44, recently had to retire due to the development of a disease that strikes the lungs and the heart. And he developed this after being on a run and struggling with the patient. He had a heart attack, and things went down for Scotty since then. Scotty is living day by day with the same courage and conviction that he did while serving this country as a U.S. Marine in the Gulf Wars and as a firefighter with the City of Middletown Division of Fire. And I'd just like to say, Scotty, we love you, and we're pulling for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Lawley. That brings us to our council comments this evening. We'll start with Mr. Moon.
I'd just like to congratulate everybody on their promotions this evening. Also want to congratulate Amy on the birth of her first grandchild. That's so exciting. I'm sure other people were going to mention Light Up Middletown, but I wanted to mention it possibly for a different reason. Folks may know, some of you may know, probably most of you don't, that I have a younger sister with autism. And folks with autism love their routine. She goes to Kroger every day. Well, come December, she goes to Light Up Middletown every night. So I want to thank everybody involved with that, not only this year but in the past, because it's something she's done for decades, it seems like, just probably as long as they've had it going on. Lastly, I just want to thank both Joe Mulligan and Anita Scott Jones for their past service to the council and to the city. They did a great job. And I know it takes a lot of time, and Steve and I are going to understand more about that here shortly. So, that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bohannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I was involved with the retirement of two police officers, Sergeant John Newlin and Officer Kitty King. Wanted to recognize them for their service in the community. I also, if you noticed, some of the firefighters may have black bands across their medals. Last week, a Hamilton firefighter lost his life in a fire in the line of duty. And I did participate in a couple of the events that they had for him down there. And I just wanted to pass on my sympathy to the family, as well as to the firefighter's family themselves. Other than that, I guess the Light Up Middletown, they couldn't complain. The weather was bad. They had great weather. So I guess the profits will be up on that. So that'll be good. We'll see more lights out there next year. Other than that, I'd also like to thank the citizens of Middletown that put me in this seat. I'm going to do my very best for you and make you proud of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bronston?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of condolences to extend. The Hodgson family, a teacher from Creekview School, passed away from cancer. And I know that her family, and of course the Creekview family, will miss her greatly. I have a little boy who's 10 that attends Creekview. And so I know pretty much all the teachers and principals there. But we extend condolences to her family and also to Rose Boland, who was in her 90s, and she retired from the school district here. And so some of you may have seen her in the cafeteria or working around town, but we're going to miss her. Congratulations to Amy, of course, for her first grandbaby. It's going to be a lot of fun. Congrats to everyone here tonight, the medicine shop, all of the promotions that we've had. And I'd just like to say that Middletown is, of course, making strides. And we could see that happening here with all of our promotions and just the ambiance here tonight with all of you here. Light Up Middletown, I was there. I volunteered. There are a lot of cars from out of state and out of our county. So many people did come repeatedly and brought their families. And I probably saw your sister there. So that was a great success. I'd like to talk about an upcoming event that we have annually. That's the MLK Weekend. That Sunday will be a march. And there will be an ecumenical service at St. John's Holy Family, my sinuses are bothering me, on that Sunday. Then on that Monday, there will be a service at 12 o'clock at the atrium. So come out and attend that. I'd like to say congratulations to our colleague Larry Mulligan for being back as our mayor, and of course, our two new colleagues, Tal Moon and Steve Bohannon. So just want to recognize the other people that are on our team. I would like to put in a personal note. I thank all of you for coming. I have friends here who said they were going to come support me tonight, and was not aware of their comments, but I appreciate it. And I just wanted to say, my husband would like to be here. But Ron, you know, and a lot of my family members know that he suffers from PTSD. And like Scott, he has a lot of issues physically with Agent Orange and just a variety of things. He had kidney surgery. He's going to have surgery on his knee. He has eye surgeries planned. And so to live with a Vietnam veteran is quite a task. My oldest daughter is not here, Mayor, but she goes to Miami University. She has quite a testimony. She spent five years in prison. She's now pursuing her degree. And so we're going through that. And I thank my church family for supporting me through those times. So thank you all for being here. Hopefully, you'll assess me on the work that I've done so far. While I was campaigning, the acronym for DORA, I was dependable, is what I told you, objective, also respectable and approachable. DORA is able. And I've been attending all kinds of activities around town, as I usually do, because I love Middletown and I love going out. So I'm out there and I love people. So hopefully, I've done what I've said I was going to do. A lot of calls and a lot of concerns about things going on in the city that I've addressed. And I sure would like to be the next Vice Mayor for the City of Middletown. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Picard?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to welcome our new council members and look forward to working with both of you and look forward to continuing the success that this city has enjoyed recently. I'd also like to congratulate all of the firefighters who were promoted tonight. Sure that all of those are well-deserved promotions, and I look forward to your continuing to serve the city in the future.
Beyond that, I'd simply like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I look forward to the city continuing its recovery.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments to offer. First off, like everyone else, welcome to both Steve and Tal. Look forward to working with you over the next four years. I think we've got a lot of good things going for us, and I'm glad you'll be part of the action here and look forward to working together as we move things forward. I would like to remind everyone, we're working on getting the council retreat planned for December, or January 23rd. So if we have comments or thoughts for Mr. Atkins, things we'd like to consider or, you know, talk through, it's certainly good form to do that. And as well as for the citizens, if you have thoughts or comments or things to share, please reach out to us and let us know as well. It's not that we set the entire plan for the year. We obviously have the budget, but allows us to look a little further out in the future and understand kind of where we need to go and some actions that we can put in place to build for our future. And I look forward to that time, which will be well-spent, you know, doing some of those long-term plans. I would like to express my appreciation to the firefighters here tonight. It's evident that we have quite a great team of firefighters, you know, up through the ranks. It's great that we're able to support them and see them grow. And as Mr. Bohannon mentioned, the tragedy in Hamilton reminds us so often of the perils that our first responders face in many different events. So your service to the community is very much appreciated and certainly recognized and certainly not forgotten by any means. And tonight's pending ceremonies are certainly a reminder of that service. So I appreciate you sharing that ceremony with us as well. And lastly, we don't have First Friday on the first Friday, but it's going to be on the second Friday downtown, with the first following on the first Friday. They took it off. But this Friday downtown should be some nice events, you know, with the Pendleton and the downtown merchants. I don't know if we'll have our designated outdoor refreshment area open or not. I'm curious to see how that works. I understand they did that at New Year's Eve, and hopefully it went well. But it's certainly great that we can be the first in the state to do that, and certainly I commend staff on that. Might be a little chilly, but, you know, we can lay the plans for the coming summer and springtime, when hopefully that'll be better. So a lot to look forward to in 2016 here in Middletown, and that's certainly one small part of it. And with that, Ms. Bretland, we can move to our two pieces of legislation for tonight.
Thank you. The first thing will be the second reading for Ordinance Number O-2015-82, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an agreement with Buxton for assistance in retail recruitment that is ready for action this evening.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
All right.
The second item is not on your agenda. I apologize for the lack of notice. Law Department was only, became aware of this issue yesterday, January 4th. Must respond by this Friday, January the 8th. That's why it's not on the agenda and why it's an emergency. We'll first need a motion to waive the charter provision requiring two separate readings as to Resolution Number R-2016-01.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the charter requiring reading on two separate days and to declare Resolution Number R-2016-01 an emergency to be read one time only.
Okay. And a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Resolution Number R-2016-01, a resolution objecting to the issuance of a D-5 liquor permit to Bobby Brown doing business as the Third Base, 9/11 Crawford Street, Middletown, Ohio 45044, directing the city clerk to request a hearing to determine whether such permit shall be issued and declaring an emergency.
Okay. And a motion to adopt?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other comments from what you had earlier or anything, Mr. Atkins or?
No, Your Honor.
Ms. Bretland? Okay. Any questions from council? All right. With that, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to our last item for tonight, our executive session. So I need a motion under the authority of Ohio Vice Code 121.22G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
for our vice mayor position, and don't exactly know how long it will be, but we'll work through it and come back and take that action, and then we'll be recessing for our next meeting in these chambers on July 19th.
January.
January, July. I'm ready for, I'm ready for summer, so. All right. With that, we end recess executive session.